To the meeting of January 14th. Kaylee, can we get roll call, please?
Yes. Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Madrone?
Present.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Present.
Chair Bushnell?
Good morning again.
All are here.
Thank you. Can we salute our flag, please? C.O. Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Chair Bushnell. Item D1 is being pulled for discussion and item D3 will be pushed to the 28th.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to go on to our consent calendar and I did not bring my proclamation in here. Is anybody here for the human trafficking proclamation? Okay. Are there any comments on the consent calendar before we do that? And I need to run and grab it. Jim, why don't you come on up? And I'm going to have Supervisor Arroyo read that proclamation for us.
Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of human trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas victims of human trafficking are typically forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts, drug processing and distribution, and other services induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas due to its isolating nature, many individuals locally and across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in Humboldt County and neighboring counties. And whereas it is estimated that more than 20 million men, women, and children around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas the Human Rights Commission, Empower, Protect, and Invest, and other concerned groups are working to abolish human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby call upon the citizens of Humboldt County to recognize the vital role they can play in ending all forms of slavery and to support the Human Rights Commission of Humboldt County as they raise awareness through education and other efforts to stop human trafficking.
Good morning and thank you. The Human Rights Commission is pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of the tireless work underway in our rural community to disrupt and defeat human trafficking or sex trafficking. For a number of years, the Commission has collaborated with EPI, which is Empower, Protect, and Invest, and groups like the Seroptimists Clubs to educate the general public of the problem that exists in our very own communities. The work is emotional, gritty, and when successful, very satisfying. We appreciate the help the county has given in the past in funding that has been redirected to this effort. Your help in educating our residents is a big part of this effort, and for that, we thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for all the work that you do. So we will come back to the consent calendar. Does any member of this board have comments? Supervisor Bone?
Well, I think the Sheriff's Department and Indigenous, missing people that are working hand in hand now, and that's a great program. I remember it's been just a few years ago that R-CRC, which we belong to, donated $500,000 to a program for human trafficking, one of the benefits. But they donated that to a Project Freedom, I think, and they actually were up here and did a presentation. So these are great steps, but there's more to be made, and I think they're being made. So I appreciate everybody involved. Jim, thank you for the Human Rights Commission for bringing this forward, but there's other groups working on it too. So and that's a great.
Yeah, I think collaboratively, many groups are working on this. And I remember something coming across our agenda that the Sheriff's Department had gotten a grant for human trafficking to, you know, dive into that. And so I really appreciate what all the uniformed officers in Humboldt County and across California do for human trafficking. It's such a huge problem and it just really affects multitudes of people. And so I am glad that this proclamation came forward today and that we're bringing awareness to this item. Any other comments on the consent calendar from the board? Well, I would like to recognize that we're reappointing three planning commissioners today and thank my planning commissioner, Thomas Mulder. It's a lot for the public when they get on these boards. And he lives in Southern Humboldt and drives up two times a month in the evenings. And, you know, it's a big commitment, so I really appreciate that. I also want to recognize that we have an opening for an at-large planning commissioner. So if you're interested in that position, please contact the clerk of the boards to get an application. And as always, we really depend on the public for these boards and commissions and for their voice to our board to help us make decisions with this county. So if there are no comments, then we will go to public comment. Supervisor Bone?
I do appreciate the new format where we're announcing that far ahead of time so we won't have the gap. And I'll throw in, I think Sarah West has done a great job. And so come loaded for bear because she's done a great job. She's very informed, so. But that shouldn't stop anybody from throwing their name in the ring.
Thank you for that. And so we're going to go to Zoom first. So if you're listening, please mute your television and listen to Kaylee. And we'll start with Zoom public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. Caller 7718, I'll unmute you and you have three minutes. Caller 7718? Caller 7718, you're good to go.
Is there any other public comment on Zoom?
No.
Okay, so we're going to close public comment on Zoom and we'll go to the audience.
Good morning, Chair Bushnell. Sheriff Billy Hansel, and I just wanted to thank the Human Rights Commission for bringing forward the human trafficking recognition. This is something that we do take very, very seriously here in Humboldt County. Just like you mentioned, we are a part of a Northern California Coalition to Safeguard Communities. It's a conglomerate of five counties, including the sheriffs and the district attorneys, where we are combating human trafficking. We are going after this. This is kind of like the dirty little secret in the cannabis industry since legalization. The cost of labor has and the cost of marijuana sold per pound has forced people to look for other means and to help the cannabis industry, and that is human trafficking. That is forced labor. And we're here to put that an end to that and call attention to that. And we're not just talking about it, we're doing something about it. And so I'm thankful for the five counties, that's Lake, Mendocino, Siskiyou, Trinity, and Humboldt, forming this coalition and going after the illegal cannabis and focusing on, you know, trying to save these people that are trapped in this illegal industry. And so we are working at it, we're going after it, and you're going to see more and more of it this year. We're actually hosting training in Humboldt County this week, two days, for first responders and our marijuana law enforcement officers, as well as victim advocacy, as well as DAs, to educate people on this and to make a coordinated effort in our five counties to really combat this. So you're going to see more and more of this, and I'm very, very happy that, again, we're shining a light on it, and the more and more people find out about it, maybe we will push it out of Northern California, and that's our hope. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff Hansel. Any other? Not yet, Allison. So this is public comment on the consent calendar. And if nobody else comes forward, I'll close public comment, and we will entertain a motion, please.
I'll move consent minus D1, is that right? And? And D3?
A second.
Kaylee?
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo? Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So we will go to items pulled from consent and the first, so the one D3 is going to be coming back to us at a later time. And so we're going to go to D1 Aviation, and I think our CAA O'Hayes will introduce it.
Yes. This item comes before your board to approve a contract following a request for proposals that took place. And before you today is Karen Clower, who is Assistant County Administrator Officer, Chief Operating Officer, Interim Aviation Director, Interim Economic Development Director, wearing many hats for your board these days. But she will present along with Kathy Kanapa on this item.
Thank you. So prior to the presentation, I'm going to ask Supervisor Wilson if he has, you pulled the item, and so if you have comments or questions of the Aviation Department.
Sure. I just pulled this item because, for one, again, and I'm sure we all do, a lot of questions about the parking situation at the airport. So I wanted to at least highlight that and let the public know that there's movement forward in that progress, or there's progress in that. And then also, you know, there had been talk in the past, and I think there was a report that we had done in sort of a strategic planning for the airport. And it had discussed the county potentially taking over management of the parking. And so this seems to, well, I don't know if it deviates from that or not, but I wanted just to see what you guys had to say about that and why we're, why it was made, the decision was made to choose to go with a vendor in this situation. So that, those are my comments to get this started. Thanks.
Great. Well, good morning, Chair Bushnell and members of the board. I'll give you, I'll just start with a brief overview of where the parking lot project stands and then hit some highlights about the agenda item today and why we selected to move forward with the vendor rather than pulling the parking project in-house. So the California Redwood Coast Humboldt County or ACV Parking Lot Reconstruction Project was awarded in March of 2024 at a cost of about $7,036,000 using FAA CARES Act funding. Currently, the project is over 87% complete, with the parking lot itself being 96% complete. Some of the remaining elements of the project include the PG&E switchgear and the electric vehicle charging stations in the main parking lot. Those are expected to be completed in August or September of this year. The Nissan Leaf connectivity in the overflow lot is expected to be completed next month. And then the item before you today, while not part of the original parking lot reconstruction project, does fall right in line with that project as we complete the reconstruction. And that's the Parking Revenue Management System. Some historic context to the management system is the 2017 Valer Strategic Initiative for the airport. In that report, it discusses that in 2017, parking at ACV generated about $400,000 in gross revenue receipts, where the county only retained about 56% of those revenues. And then in 2016, gross revenues rose to about $519,000, with the county retaining approximately $305,000 of those receipts, or 59%. With the proposal in front of you today with Laz Parking of California, the estimated gross receipts are about $1.1 million annually. The county's cost share with this new system is estimated to be about, from 65% of revenue up to $200,000, to as much as 90% of revenue up to $600,000. Some of the benefits with the new parking management system include modern payment options. In addition to accepting cash payments, we'll be able to accept credit card payments, Apple Pay, and an app-based payment system will be accepted. There'll be a kiosk payment option, there'll be management on-site, and a 24/7 call center for support as needed. Laz Parking of California will provide operational efficiencies that include a vendor management system with personnel on-site during peak hours and an established callback window as needed. Vendor equipment maintenance, trash and debris removal in the parking lot areas, and vehicle towing managed by the vendor. A 24/7, again, a 24/7 call center for support. Additionally, Laz Parking of California currently operates over 1.6 billion parking spaces at 4,000 locations in 42 states. Laz also is currently under contract with 34 airports, including LAX, Oakland International, and Long Peach airports. In the 2017 Valer study, it recommended bringing parking management in-house, as stated earlier, citing the potential revenue benefits of doing so. However, currently, the staffing constraints and long-term feasibility make the vendor management the most cost-effective solution for the Department of Aviation. Additionally, the 2017 Valer study recommended that we increase parking rates at ACV to $14 a day for short-term parking, excuse me, and $10 a day for long-term parking. The Department introduced flat rates back in fiscal year 2324. That was in consultation with an aviation expert, and the rates remain the same to date. Those rates are on the current fee schedule. I'm happy to provide those rates if you have questions about that. In closing, the proposed parking management system aligns with the airport's modernization goals, optimizes revenue potential, alleviates operational burdens on limited staff. By incorporating advanced technology and professional management, this solution positions ACV to deliver a seamless parking experience while securing financial sustainability for the Department of Aviation. We would recommend that you approve this item today.
Thank you, Karen. I will first bring it back to Supervisor Wilson for any comments and then open it to the board.
Just a couple of questions. One is, this contract goes to 2030, is that, do I have that right? So does it have the potential, if at that time, the Department feels like there's enough staff to do this, bringing some of these things in-house? Is that something that's of consideration?
It's something that we could certainly consider at that time.
Okay. And then they're seeing, when you're saying there's revenue of 1.1 million, or there could be, or there might be, and then we're ranging between 65% and 90%, that's a pretty big number when it's a million, you know? So I'm just kind of wondering where, how would we lean into the 90% versus the 65%?
You want to speak to that, Kathy?
So after the annual gross revenues exceed $600,000, then we're, and then we're in the 90% revenue share. So when, at the beginning of the year, when our revenues, until they eclipse $200,000, we're receiving 65%. But then after they eclipse $200,000 and they're in that 200,000 to 400,000, then we're receiving 75% of the share. Between 400,000 and 600,000, we're receiving 80% of the share. And then after we exceed $600,000, then we're automatically receiving 90% of the share for the rest of the year. So, and we expect to do that. We expect to exceed $600,000. So for the end of the fiscal year, we should be receiving 90% of the share. Does that make sense?
Kind of. Is it 90% of the total? Is it 90% of what's been earned after you hit that mark?
Of the gross revenues, yeah.
Well, those are my two questions. I appreciate, I do want to emphasize that if we can, and, you know, have those discussions with the vendor about the potential of bringing this in-house in the future, that would be, I would say, something we should be considering. Thank you.
Okay, any Supervisor Bone?
So I'll do basic math. If they bring in $500,000, we get $330,000 somewhere in there?
Say yes, because his numbers are late.
I'm just, and that's, that's very approximate. But what I'm saying is, I'm looking at the 24-hour, the on-call, when it gets busy, the equipment, the handling of the credit cards and everything else. Could we staff it for $170,000 a year? That's a person and a half. Could a person and a half handle that parking lot, all the funding and everything else? You're out there every day. And I look to see this revenue start to go extreme because that parking lot is killer. I've had more complaints. The only thing I heard was they felt like it was the Safeway store because they couldn't figure out where to park now. But once they get figured out, they'll be able to park. But the expansion, the, what do we increase it by 30%, the parking? And parking revenues were down because people couldn't find a place to park. And parking revenues were down because we had an ant issue that we took care of. I mean, there's been a lot of things, well, I mean, it was, it was a major problem, but we've cleaned it up, it looks great. So the revenue will go up. And once we get to 90%, if we get to $1 million, I mean, that's, that's extreme. But if we get to $1 million at 90%, could we do it for $100,000? I mean, because of our money, you know, the staffing part of it. So I appreciate, you know, I like to do everything in-house as much as possible. But when we're having so many staffing problems in so many critical positions, could we critically answer those questions? So I appreciate the idea of doing as much as we can in-house, but sometimes it's best to let the professionals who, what do they have, 4,000 airports or 4,000 locations or 1.1, and do it and get the return. So I appreciate the idea of seeing if we can scratch out a little bit more. But it sounds like they were the, on the RFP, they were also the low bidder besides the preferred bidder. So, I mean, I see a lot of advantages. I have been pushing for this for 10 or 12 years because I thought the old system was so antiquated and so many people were jury-rigging the system, so. And cash in, hand out, we had no control over it. This is, this is complete control. So I appreciate all your efforts and work on this.
So I, if anyone else? I just want to say that, you know, the parking lot at the ACV has been up for discussion every time someone parks there previous to this, and why it's so difficult, why there's not enough, so forth and so on. And so I appreciate the efforts started by Cody before and finishing off with you ladies now. And so I just really appreciate the efforts that we went to to improve our airport parking and to make it more accessible for handicapped and more accessible for just parking in general with more parking spots. And so thank you for that. And then I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond if you want to before I go out to public comment. And Supervisor Madrone has a comment as well, if you have nothing.
I don't have any.
Okay.
After long flights coming home, especially if you've gone through San Francisco, by the time you get to the airport, get your luggage, and get to the parking lot, you're exhausted. And the old system, you could wait a half an hour in that line to get out. So this is going to be such a mass, massive improvement to efficiency and timeliness for people. I know people are going to really, really appreciate it. But mainly, I just wanted to thank you both for all the heavy lifting you're doing right now, being short-staffed and all that. So thank you, because I know it's not easy. Karen, in particular for yourself, with three positions that you're covering, it is a yeoman's effort, yeowoman's effort, and I just really, really appreciate all the hard work you both are doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to public comment on Zoom?
There is none.
Okay, we're going to go to public comment in the audience. Please come forward. Good morning.
Hello and good morning, everyone. First, I want to applaud your efforts and the execution of the parking lot. It looks so great out there. It's sad to lose the trees, but it's always good to see progress, right, for the things that we need. I also wanted to bring up that Laz Parking also has a foundation, a charitable foundation, and they donate more than $2 million, $2 million to their mission, which is to serve underserved communities by supporting solutions for housing, education, food insecurity, mental health, and career development. So in my hopes to bring this up is that while you're negotiating contracts, if you could keep in mind that we have a Boys and Girls Club right there in McKinleville that has such important work to do in our community, if there could be even visibility for signage about, and there could be some alignment. I am the executive director for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast, and we're always recruiting mentors, and we need our community to know about this invaluable civic opportunity for them. So if there's ways that we can incorporate and leverage their community giving campaign while you're doing this contract, we'd really appreciate and value those contributions. Currently, Big Brothers, Big Sisters is starting a monthly campaign just to raise $7,000 a month, and that's really what we need over, we're looking for 280 givers at $25 a month. And so any visibility to those types of initiatives would really help us locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the floor? So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to go with staff recommendation, and thanks for coming out and did the job, which was to let the public know the advancements in this and what the status is. Appreciate that.
Second to motion.
Kaylee?
Supervisor Bone?
Look at us all getting modern. Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So now we will go to public hearing on non-agenda items. Anybody on Zoom, Kaylee?
No.
Okay, so go ahead. We have one comment on Zoom.
Caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you and you have three minutes.
Hello, Kent Swawsky. Sorry, I couldn't speak earlier on the trafficking. This is somewhat related to this. It's what I'm talking about, you have my comments. An article was put out by, I refer to the John Doe Journalist, and his comment was regarding ICWA and CWS. This is an important topic in the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. To look into it, but not because Kent Swawsky submitted a letter. In fact, the BOLF should look into it despite the fact that Kent brought this forward. I'm suggesting that you consider looking into it. I continually warn the county about its possible problems it's about to face. You have a director of DHHS who is actively involved in protecting pedophiles and sending children back, especially indigenous children to the pedophile. You have a problem. Who are the players going to be most likely? Well, this is the year of the dragon, next year is the year of the snake, according to Chinese tongues, we declare this to be the century of the autistic. So people like Ian Muck, John F. Kennedy Jr., and those kind of people, who most likely will be affirmed as far as being DHHS with respect, will be in your world. So get ready. Some people don't want to listen to my warnings, but we'll see what happens. So I don't think you're going to be very happy. Thanks for not being able to speak. Thanks for not appearing to speak.
Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll go to public comments on non-agenda items to the floor. Good morning, Allison.
Good morning, Chair Bushnell and supervisors. I'm Allison Talbot, your local government relations representative for PG&E. I just wanted to start off the year by saying good morning, reminding you I'm here if you have any issues that I can help navigate, or for you or for your constituents. Just wanted to say good morning and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Anybody else from the public, non-agenda items? No? Okay. So we're going to close that portion of the agenda, and we will, we have a pretty light agenda this morning, so we are going to go clear down to matters initiated by the board. And number one is a presentation on medical provider recruitment and retention. This is brought to us by Supervisor Arroyo, so I'm going to pass that off.
Thank you very much, Chair Bushnell. I am going to be, you're going to be the first ones to see this presentation, and I'd love your feedback, because I'll be presenting again at an event in a couple of weeks. So I'll give that information at the end of the presentation. But let's go ahead and pull up my slides, and we'll get rolling. And where do I point this? Just out into space?
Just click it over.
Oh, wow. Great. Okay. Fancy. All right. So I'll be going through what I've learned and sort of summarizing the information that I've gained through a series of interviews. I will say that I got interested in this topic because it's a top constituent concern. People, you know, certainly bring up the issue of healthcare provider recruitment and retention quite often to me, especially in this particular district, because there's so many medical institutions in, you know, in my district or in the general Humboldt Bay area, although we have them all over the county, and I'll get into who I talked with. So this is something that, you know, I'm personally passionate about because of some experiences I had with my own family members and, you know, wanted to understand what the current status is, because I kept hearing narratives that I thought might be a little bit outdated, and it turns out they were. I kept hearing reasons why it's difficult to recruit or retain doctors, nurse practitioners, and physicians assistants here, and the actual current picture was much more complex, and I learned a lot through doing this, so I wanted to share out what I've learned. So these are folks I spoke with. I did give people the option of speaking with me anonymously and not being listed. So I did speak with the folks on the left-hand column, our doctors, nurse practitioners, and physicians assistants, either still practicing or very recently retired. And then the folks kind of in those right-to columns are folks in the medical community who are CEOs or administrators. A couple are nursing directors and other experts in their field. And then I was provided with several planning and strategy documents, some of which were somewhat internal or not really public documents, but folks let me review them to understand kind of the recruitment and retention approaches. And I will say, I really strove to speak with providers who were newer to the community, along with folks who've been here a long time. There were dozens more people I reached out to who didn't get back to me or schedule, and I realize this is not an exhaustive list, but it's who I had time to talk to and was able to schedule with. There was enormous variety in responses, and I put down here at the bottom of the slide, level of conviction was very high for everyone. So I heard a lot of different things that people felt very strongly were the truth. So, like with many things, I think the people's perceptions are everything. So I'll cover some of the big changes and universal challenges that are particularly present over the last few years, what folks feel is working for recruitment and retention, some of the unique local constraints we're facing, some of the things people said local government could do to help, and what local community members could do to help. All right. So we are in a circumstance where there's a healthcare provider shortage nationwide. And when I say healthcare provider, I am referring to, you know, doctors, nurse practitioners, and physicians assistants, although there are many, many more folks in the healthcare community who have a critically important role. That was the focus of this particular series of interviews. So within about 10 years, we're going to be facing a physician shortage in the U.S. of over 85,000 physicians, and that's from the American Association of Medical Colleges. And that's not accounting for the already underserved areas. So to reach, you know, equity with the more served areas, it would be five times that. So it's quite a shortfall that we're facing. That's, that was staggering to me. And more than 40% of physicians in the United States are 55 or older. That labor projection, there isn't a ton of hopeful news when we look at our demographics, because as a result of the 2006 to 2008 financial crisis, there's a pretty steep birth rate decline, and that hasn't really picked up since. So, there is quite a decline in the percentage of folks who are anticipated to go to college starting really about this year, because we're hitting that kind of demographic cliff. So there's a concern that there aren't, you know, there's like a 15% reduction projected for people going to college or getting, getting through some of that, you know, preliminary coursework just to be able to go to medical school. So that's quite dire. And then there's a percentage of population here that's higher than usual that is not in the workforce, either folks who are retired, disabled, or for whatever other reason not working. And these shortages are much more pronounced in rural areas. So the bottom bullet might be surprising to people. I had many folks tell me that we are in much better shape than many rural areas, and that we enjoyed a very unique abundance of medical providers for many years, and that that has fallen off for some key reasons. But many folks emphasized to me that while it is incredibly important to focus on recruitment and retention, that we're in better shape than many places. So the implementation of new electronic medical record systems was given by folks as a key reason why they saw retirements within their clinics or their systems over the last 10 to 15 years, particularly the most recent wave, that people, that combined with the COVID-19 pandemic triggered some, a wave of retirements, and people just not wanting to take on that, that particular combination of factors and choosing to retire instead, some of whom had stayed in the workforce longer than average anyway. And those new technology requirements also include, you know, interacting with remote specialists, being able to, you know, do that effectively and quickly, including specialists all over the world, dealing with robotics and a variety of other new systems. So there's been a large number of retirements here and elsewhere, and a lot of part-time conversions, so people wanting to go from working full-time, whatever that means within their system, which is, was also staggering to me, and wanting to go to part-time. And then quite a few closures of small practices, which I think many of us have experienced are, you know, I know at least for me, my, the small practice I used to go to closed many years ago. So changing expectations from patients about speed with notes and referrals, and quite a few people referenced a change in perceptions about health outcomes, that patients were having different expectations of the medical system, and perfect wellness was an expectation for many people that was not achievable. Providers are often each assigned 800 to 2,000 patients, sometimes more. The 800 was someone who was technically part-time. So it was helpful to understand that, how many people are assigned to each provider. Definitely a lot of interest in work-life balance, many people wanting to work not full-time and not wanting to be on-call. And then fewer younger providers are in families with a single income household. If they do have family members, they're all working. So, probably not the children, but both are multiple, you know, providers in the household as far as finances. So, these were some morale killers that people talked about. An increasing amount of time with records, I'm sure this has always been challenging for folks, but particularly with learning new systems, people mentioned this quite a lot, and less time with patients, and that patients had a noticeably shorter fuse with their providers, taking out the frustration as there are shortfalls in our system of care, they're taking out that frustration on the people that they do see, and that that makes it just not as enjoyable to do, to do the really hard parts of the work. People's negative talk about Humboldt as a whole came up. That was consistent throughout almost every interview, that the overall poor self-esteem of Humboldt County is that, has this outsized impact on recruitment and retention. And then that institutional leadership, of course, like any institution, can really make or break morale. So it is common for people to be leaving school with more than half a million dollars in debt. That certainly was, was a smaller figure in the past. I didn't get a real clear picture of, you know, how that has changed over time by looking at national data versus local data, but at least anecdotally, many people said they were upwards of $500,000 in debt who were newer providers. And after decades, many are still paying off student loans. Many of the folks who've been here a long time are still aiming for that public, you know, service, loan service forgiveness program. There used to be a product of physician loans for homes, for people who were in high debt and had a low down payment, and those are very rare today. So many folks, particularly older providers, mentioned that in the past, they had been able to get a physician loan, and when they told their younger peers to go seek that out, that has evaporated. And then loan forgiveness and repayment tools are really just changing so often, and there's not one clearinghouse for that information. So that is something that folks pointed to as a desire and a need for someone to coordinate that information. That kind of varies by institution, as far as how much information and assistance is provided to people. So I asked, who thrives here? Who are we really seeking to recruit? And the information wasn't terribly surprising to me, but it was very consistent in this category. People who really enjoy a mission-driven approach, so want to solve problems themselves, like working alone, kind of have a positive outlook on working alone or with a small team, people who clearly, people who love the outdoors, do well here in a slower pace of life. But quite a few folks said it's either like a lifestyle people like or don't like, and that there's not a lot you can do about that aspect of it. The type of person who would, you know, really do some kind of service-minded program like Doctors Without Borders thrives here, and those who have connections to people here. So they don't necessarily have to be from here, but feel connected to folks in this Current recruitment efforts are, are pretty institution by institution. There isn't, in the past, it sounds like there were some efforts to get people here and then tour multiple institutions, but they were often going to the bigger ones. So that didn't really work out for the smaller institutions that were pooling their funds to bring people here. So now it really seems to be each institution doing their own thing. But it's really focused on bringing providers and their whole family to visit in-person, because that has really helped to address a lot of the challenges with, you know, people signing on and then getting here and realizing that, you know, it's not for them. Not hiding the difficult aspects of life here, being honest about that, but also showcasing the strengths, trying to find that balance. There are bonuses and incentives, some institutions have them, and then Partnership Health has them for doctors, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, dentists. There's also a focus on behavioral health, substance use counselors, particularly OB-GYN providers. So those do exist, and they are, they are being utilized, but it's slow. There's a lot of effort to bring people who are locums or travelers into longer-term gigs by offering flexibility, by offering, you know, one week on here, two weeks off somewhere else, things like that, to try to get people here, but to make a commitment longer term. And then, you know, a lot of focus on residency programs through the family medicine, nurse practitioner, and dentistry residencies. And there's some Providence-Humboldt-specific recruitment, so that used to be pooled with NAPA and Sonoma within that system of care, and now they focus specifically on Humboldt and that institution. So that was, that was a win for them. Retention efforts really focused on flexibility of schedules. Again, people are really, really wanting more flexibility, and they're striving to provide that. So some of the hospitals and institutions mentioned providing like a four-day workweek that is still compressed, so that is still a full workweek, but within a shorter number of days. Retention bonuses, so that is specifically right now for people with 15 or more years of practice and at least three more years that they plan to practice. That was through partnership in particular. A lot of emphasis on providing childcare, housing, and other kinds of support, so sort of concierge services, especially for people that are new to the community. Some institutions do that within their own institution, but there is a realization that some of the smaller networks of, you know, and rural networks need that kind of support. Really incorporating providers into organizational planning and the community through being able to do, you know, public health-related work or, you know, long-term planning and visioning for the organization is a way to really help people feel connected, sell people in a vision. That came up in a lot of the conversations. And then retention was, you know, when I said, what are you doing for recruitment? Everyone like kind of lit up, and I said, what are you doing for retention? They were like, oh, okay, we're doing our best. So recruitment seemed to be an area where there's a lot of focus right now. All right. Some of the key challenges, this will surprise no one, housing. But due to enormous debt, a lot of people, especially younger providers, said they were looking for really modest housing. And so I think there's a perception that folks want a really huge glamorous home, and for many of the folks who are coming out of school with 500, 600, 700,000 dollars in debt, they just wanted like a little apartment that was clean. So I was surprised by that, that that kind of workforce housing is desired by folks in all levels of these organizations. A range of options really being key, so that is reflected already in a lot of our housing planning documents, but that's something that people mentioned. There are providers staying in hotels for months or years at a time who have committed to long-term contracts here. And then quite a few people mentioned this borderline, this was a quote, borderline predatory environment of furnished rentals, that it's, you know, everyone thinks they've got a cash cow if they're bringing in a medical provider, and it's, it's quite out of step with the rest of the rental market. Medical institutions are buying apartment buildings and homes for their providers to have a place to land. Quite a few already have done that and are interested in doing that. So that was helpful to hear. Insurance reimbursements is its own whole ball of wax. I'm not sure, you know, I can reflect everything that I heard here. But a helpful thing for me as a non-medical person was to understand that provider FaceTime really drives the payments for everything else. So, you can have all these additional important services that are provided to improve people's health, but that FaceTime is really the driver, and that's how you get, that's how these institutions get money. I had heard in the past something that was incorrect around Medi-Cal and Medicare. Almost every institution and every doctor said that Medi-Cal and Medicare, to their knowledge, is easier to process, and that that is the most reliable for reimbursement. And many of the private insurance holders or folks who have bought their own insurance on the Affordable Care Act market are the most difficult to process. So that includes me as a patient. When I come in, I'm, I'm essentially kind of gumming up the works of the, of the insurance reimbursement process. There's a lot of interest in exploring models that include bundled payments. There are a few providers that have managed to do this in the way that they've set up their care model. One of those is the Humboldt Senior Resource Center PACE program, but not, but a lot of the institutions struggle to have bundled payments that are related to, you know, sort of general health outcomes. There are financial incentives for some of the institutions when they meet wellness targets, and those are key parts of their income stream for some of them. But that does also inform their decision-making in some key ways, because if they don't think that they will be able to meet those wellness targets, they will kind of retool things so that they can, because that's a key part of how they're funded. And then family medicine doctors are really the most versatile in this current system. So, you know, they can see more people for more things, and specialists are in a more challenging place. So it makes sense that the focus is on those jack-of-all-trades-type providers, but that does leave some gaps in pediatrics and OB-GYN care and others. So another challenge was really people, particularly new folks to the community, and people telling me about peers who have left were saying that they really struggled to connect to people here, that it takes a lot of time to develop a sense of community and find your scene, find your people, that there's a lot of gatekeeping of information about things to do. So, you know, I know I'm guilty of that. I don't really want to tell people where my favorite swimming hole is, because I don't want it to get too crowded, that kind of thing, but that that- But that, that on a broader scale can really make people feel isolated and not welcomed. Increasingly, providers are more diverse, and so they're looking for those affinity groups that provide a cultural connection. And because of the demographic information I talked about earlier, that's expected to grow. So we're really seeing, especially the rural clinics and federally qualified health centers are able to expedite visas, for example, for international providers to come here. And when those folks land here, you know, they're really looking for not only, you know, their scene, but also that cultural connection. There, there were several folks who pointed to social events and networking for young professionals, so not specifically only for doctors or people in the healthcare sector, but other people who were around their age and, you know, professionals in the community who were new and looking to kind of connect with people. So every single person mentioned mental and behavioral health resources as an ongoing need. So, you know, talked about a shortage of counselors and people to refer out to in the community and an extreme shortage with private insurance. So that's, that task is falling on these healthcare providers, primary care providers in a way that is very hard for them. There's the sense that crisis care was improving and there were better relationships with, you know, say law enforcement or county services to, to refer people when needed for crisis care. But for everyone that's not in crisis, that was really where that, you know, that sort of maintenance level of mental health care was, was really seen as lacking. A lot of gratitude was, was brought up for crisis residential and post-discharge support for people in poverty, so people leaving, for example, you know, Providence-St. Joe's who don't have somewhere to land. There's now a facility where people can go and be cared for after discharge. So folks spoke about that program and about the new crisis residential centers as a key need. We have a large high-need population. This will also surprise no one that we have, you know, complex substance use and mental health needs, and those take many visits. So if those are primarily being addressed by these primary care providers, they are overwhelming the systems and the, and the people, but they're really struggling to do their best in those circumstances. And this quote was a sentiment that was echoed by many people, that if people are put off by seeing poor people in the community, they probably won't do well practicing here. So, you know, the idea that the poverty in our community being very visible is going to be off-putting for people, this was sort of a counterpoint to that, that if people can't handle that, then they're not going to do well practicing medicine here. All right, some other key themes. People need more help in the team, you know, but they also spoke to the, the skill of local nurses and medical assistants. The days of doctors working 60 to hour, 80 hours a week or sunsetting, that that's just not the, what people are willing to sign up for anymore. Patients are really who breathes life into the day of these providers, and that, that, you know, medical note-taking time is really the thing that, that sucks the life out. AI technology is really promising for inbox management, maybe even some clinical note-taking. But obviously, people want to be cautious with those new technologies. Childcare continues to be that big need, even more so now. And even if providers stay a short time, they're providing abundant value in our community. So that, there's, there's sort of a negative narrative about a revolving door of providers. Oh, they come here and they only stay a year. But that year might be really high value and they, you know, will tell others and hopefully, you know, some will consider coming back. So leaving people with that positive sense about the community, even if they're short-timers, is, is extremely important. So a few of the things on the horizon, there were quite a few programs mentioned to grow our own, so starting in K through 12 with pathways to, you know, pre-med mentoring, shadowing doctors, then going to med schools. There's some pre-identified med schools that folks can go to and then, you know, make the commitment to return back to Humboldt. So this is going to take some time to see the fruits of, but that's really positive. There is a program specifically for indigenous doctors to go to school and return home to their, their local community to provide services that are culturally relevant, and that's really exciting. Cal Poly Humboldt and College of the Redwoods are really doing quite a lot. I got the sense, well, I didn't get the sense, I was told that some of this is still under wraps, but there will be, there's a word missing here, but new info coming soon. So workforce development, new programs and facilities, some of that has already been announced and some of it is yet to be announced. There's quite a lot of workforce development and medical business support with institutions already in the community, including our own workforce development board and county teams. And then a continuing focus on those recruitment bonuses and selling the sort of unique aspects of Humboldt. So it being a climate refuge, us having an abundance of colleges and higher education institutions. And interestingly, several younger providers with families said that they were very excited that they could choose from schools and they were not limited to their district. So that school choice for K-12 was something that was, I wasn't really, wasn't on my radar as a key selling point. Okay, so areas that people said local government could help, I asked everyone this question, how can local government assist you? Really identifying more spaces to develop medical services by right, so zoning and land use perspective on that. There is a big shortage of clinic space. Continuing partnering with the medical institutions to really support advocacy efforts, so insurance-related advocacy and building code-related advocacy. There are quite a lot of those folks I interviewed said they were desperately looking for more space to construct and that the construction requirements for medical institutions are so onerous that it was also very, very, very challenging for them to be able to afford it. But providers are doubled, tripled, quadrupled up in tiny spaces, so many of them said they were bursting at the seams. And then housing streamlining, if we can find a pathway to support medical-specific workforce housing for all folks in the medical sector, particularly with a focus on the moderate-income level of housing, that will really serve a lot of these debt-laden graduates who actually aren't looking for a big, you know, dramatic home. All right, planning and programs, so continuing to support either directly or sort of just in general, this setting where people can have those social opportunities and professional networking. Again, folks said like it not being doctor-specific was nice, but for them to meet other people in the community who are young professionals like themselves. Convening educational opportunities to educate the community and dispel myths. People were really, really excited to talk to me and wanted to know that this was going to be going out to the community. Developing and maintaining relationships with folks like the Humboldt-Dell Norte Medical Society, and this is for us as electeds in particular, to kind of check in and connect with them and go to their meetings when we, when we're able. You know, maintaining a strategic focus in our economic development planning on the medical sector and even medical tourism. And several folks mentioned, you know, having doctors is a form of economic development, but it's often not treated as such. So I know we are focusing on that in our economic development planning, but continuing to do that. And then investing in transportation systems, particularly air travel, that came up for a lot of folks that they are, you know, when they're out of their own kind of home community, many people are, that being able to go and visit family is, is a key thing that will make them more willing to live here. So looking upstream, a lot of desire for resources poured into public health prevention, addressing childhood trauma and other social determinants of health. This came up often and, and many times in each conversation, that it's a long-term strategy that requires patience and commitment, and we, you know, we might not see the fruits of it for, for quite some time. Focusing on behavioral health, crisis care and safety net services, this is sort of a given for the county, but increasing, by doing that, we increase capacity for them to see patients who are not in crisis. And they are willing and able to see patients in crisis, but when there are those other services, that's, that helps. So general guidance for the community, people asked for kindness. I think this is always worth talking about, that, you know, you as the patient are the highlight of these providers' day. Really working to contribute to a positive online presence of Humboldt, that we have a negative online reputation. If you have a good experience, please share it publicly because that reputation improvement process is quite slow, and that's increasingly where people are looking for information. Some providers might be looking at the stats for hospitals and other documents that, you know, I'm not privy to necessarily or know where to look for, but that when people even just do quick web searches for this community, when positive things come up, that makes a huge difference. Supporting housing, behavioral health and public health resources, that these are really serving the highest-need patients, and increasing bandwidth to address the whole community's medical needs. Encouraging the youth that we know to, that all of us know to pursue medical careers. And then there are donation opportunities to the expansion of this sector. And then these are the panelists who will be speaking at the event coming up. I'll show that in just a few moments. So again, there are probably other people who would be wonderful on this panel, but this is who we've got, and it's actually quite a large panel. So we'll have, I'll just go through them in alphabetical order. Jennifer Heidman, who's the medical director of the PACE program. Michael Kellerman, who's the CEO at Providence and Redwood Memorial. Chris Myers is the clinical officer for United Indian Health Services. Matt Reese is the CEO at Southern Humboldt Community Healthcare. Doug Shaw, CEO at Mad River. Tori Starr, CEO of Open Door. Candy Stockton is our very own County of Humboldt Public Health Officer, and Seth Whitmer, who is the CEO of Redwoods Rural. So great panel. There's a couple of ways to participate in the full live event. It'll be January 27th, which is a Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There are some seats for in-person registration left, but not a lot. And so that is the link you can go to. It's a shortened link, but it'll take you to an Eventbrite page where you can register. It's a pretty quick process. And there will be a live stream that will be hosted by Access Humboldt, which is wonderful. Thank you, Access Humboldt, for that. And you can go to their YouTube page to watch it live, as well as view the recording after the event. So I'll give another version of this presentation, but the bulk of the time will be spent on the panel. And I want to thank everyone who shared their time with me and happy to take questions or suggestions on how I can tweak this.
Thank you. Quite a presentation, great slides. So I'm going to bring it back to the board at this time for questions, and Supervisor Bone, and then Supervisor Madron.
I didn't see it or I missed it. What did they think about the internship program that are bringing doctors in? Because I know it was, we, we had a couple receptions where we brought, I barbecued Adam, obviously. But where it was a big deal and we brought in. And then we had a fundraiser, and I think five of the six interns were here, but four of the six had bought houses. And so, and I know the hidden warrior, and this is DK Stokes, Kuzum's husband, who has gone all over the country trying to find people to bring in on his own dime.
Yeah.
And I mean, we were trying to figure out how to buy houses in Lumbar Hills and allow doctors to live there, but pay their, not have a house payment or anything else, but be able to live there to get on their feet for a while. But I didn't see the internship program, which we thought was going to be more innovative than anything. And then I was, Connie Stewart, who we, I've talked to for 13 years on this because she's so involved with it, it comes down to housing.
Yeah.
It comes, and it comes down to all aspects of housing. I know we talk about, but they have a certain criteria and we, and we're not allowing that. And so again, we're talking about streamlining the process. I hear that so often when there seems to be an emergency, we can streamline the process. And I hear that in the fires, I hear that at Yee-Haw, we could streamline the process, change this and everything else. Maybe we look at streamlining the whole process so we can provide housing for people overall, and then we would see a difference. But great presentation. I know this has been going up in pieces and pieces and pieces, and it's gonna, we're not going to have any answers out of this, we're just going to have an idea why we're here. So.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything on the internship program. I was just wondering.
It's a residency program, so I did mention it in the slides, but I could emphasize that more. I could emphasize how many, you know, each year more people have stayed and signed on to stay and work in Humboldt. So it has had some success. It's a, so there's a residency program for, for dentists, for nurse practitioners and for, and for family medicine doctors. And that family medicine doctor residency has been the most, I think, well-known in the community, and, and that's the one where they've seen that, that kind of uptick every year in the number of people staying. So I think out of seven or eight residents last year, more than half stayed, so that was, that was great. So I'll emphasize that more in the presentation. And it is a residency where, I didn't get a lot into that, but that's something I could highlight more, that it has required a lot from institutions because the residents move between the local institutions and they have to, you know, commit to taking time to train them and to mentor them and to kind of shepherd them through the process of different institutions. But it's also created value for each of those, you know, healthcare clinics and hospitals in that they have, several folks said they've had more of a learning mindset and that that has impacted even the folks who are, have been there a long time in that, you know, by, by learning with others, they're more open to learning new, new things as well. So I will definitely add that.
Yeah, and this board and different formats have written letters in support of that program, so, all those programs. So that's, that's great, and the success of it is little, little chunks at a time. But the other aspect of people that don't like to see homeless, poor people won't like it here. I don't know where they're going to go to not find that, because I travel a lot, and it's not like there's areas where it doesn't have it, and it's sad but true. But we have so much NIMBYism, so much you can't have them here, we can't have them there in, in building the project. So as we move forward, maybe we'll find those answers.
And I did ask, I did ask about that idea of having networking events with, with us and with other elected officials, and the response was those were very nice, but that many of the younger doctors and NP's that I talked to were, were interested in meeting more of their peers. So I tried not to take it too personally. I was like, do you want me to come to more things? They were like, uh, I mean, not really. We kind of want to meet other people who are, who are new to the community, who are also, or, you know, people wanted to meet professionals in their age group. And so I, I think it was a kind of a, a nice way of saying like, we don't necessarily care as much about meeting elected officials, although it's very nice to get that warm welcome. They, they're the Providence, oh, I'm going to forget what they're called, the community board, that they have writes letters welcoming every doctor and nurse to the system, and I think other, other folks too. They write handwritten letters of welcome, and several people mentioned getting those and that, that getting like a handwritten card saying welcome to the community was really nice. So that's something else we could consider doing.
I've been chair of North Coast EMS for five or six years now, which is Humboldt-Dell Norte Lake County, and we have made big strides. I mean, both Providence and Mad River have up their trauma centers. And with upgrading their trauma centers to level fours and things like that, they're required to have certain people on hand at all times to have that level. So that is a care provider on a higher level for as many accidents and things that happen in our area. So anyway, thanks, great report.
And if there are questions that you think would be really helpful for me to ask those panelists, feel free to, feel free to let me know. I'm trying to make them questions that are applicable to all the panelists or that at least the majority of them can participate in, so not targeted at one particular institution. But would be happy to add to that kind of list of, of questions, and there will be an opportunity for audience members to ask questions.
Thank you. If I can make one small comment just around that same topic. I think what I've heard when I've, because I, I think all of us have dove into this because it's, you know, always top on the question list and, but is that the, the doctors are busy or whoever the person is that's working, and then the families kind of are left to fend for themselves, and they want people to interact, not electeds, because we don't interact in that same manner as day-to-day, but just to get involved with the community. And I'm wondering, did you speak to, you know, like rotaries and stuff like that, so people could get involved with their community and community events, if that's something that you heard anything about? Or maybe we can talk about that at this meeting.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Do you mean like, did I ask some of the newer folks to the community if they had plugged in in those ways? I didn't. There were a couple of providers who mentioned that they had volunteered their kind of medical knowledge to organizations like First Five and others, but not necessarily joining or their family members joining the service club, so that's a good idea.
Yeah, because they could socially, they offer a lot in the communities. And so we're going to go to Supervisor Madron now.
Thank you, Chair. Natalie, great job. I mean, reaching out to so many different people is really a tremendous amount of effort, and I very much appreciate that. I think we all know that. I think we all know that, you know, medical provisions in our community are very front and center for just about everybody in terms of what's going on. So I very much appreciate the information and your efforts to organize the upcoming forum as well. So great job on that. Just a very quick note, there was the one comment about how, you know, there's pros and cons and everything, and how people mentioned that the schools of choice was such a big positive for them in terms of coming here. But I get a lot of feedback from my constituents about the negatives in regards to duplicative administrative costs that mean less money for teachers and less money for student resources. City of Eureka, I think, has consolidated all of its schools into one administrative program, I believe, whereas Arcata, McKinneyville, not so much. So I agree, it's really nice to have that choice, but it'd be nice if we could consolidate administrative services. Very side note to what you're providing here, but because it was up there, I just thought I'd offer that because I've gotten a lot of feedback from constituents about the impact of that. In fact, in McKinneyville, one of our schools is going to be closing because of less enrollment, people going to other schools of choice and stuff. So there are impacts, positives, like anything in life. But thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. I hear you, and I feel similarly about, it's like, there's some benefits to people going to the school that's in their neighborhood, also around community building and transportation and all of those things. But it was an interesting thing that came up, and I, it wasn't really on my radar that that would influence anyone's decision. So I include it in there for what it's worth.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. That was an amazing collection of information. And certainly, virtually everything on the list is things that we've heard, but it's great to see them all in one place. So it's a deliverable to the community. That's a really wonderful service. Just a couple highlights for me. One was the exodus of medical professionals because of the change in the administrative burden that's occurred. And so where doctors or, you know, and others, and other medical professionals used to very, well, at least much more easily be able to hang their own shingle and have that sort of independent, in a small business lifestyle, that's just not a thing anymore. And that's why you're seeing this aggregation to clinic facilities, really the growth of Open Door Clinic and the growth of some of these hospital services or in our clinic services, is because it's just almost impossible for an independent medical professional to do their own business, just because of the requirements of the burdens administratively. So that, it kind of cuts out a sort of subculture of humans and how they, how they prefer to operate on, in their, in their business and providing those services. And so it sort of limits that. And so I understand, I've seen it, and the new generation that's coming up, that's not an expectation anymore, but it also, for some, it's a limitation. Second thing is on the workforce housing part about this. And as you know, I've been advocating for a long time, the addition of medical providers into the definition of workforce housing, which right now workforce housing is very limited in how we are allowed to talk about it at the state level and at the local level in terms of having funding be provided to that or subsidizing those things. And certainly, Open Door Clinic has been working on this for a while. But basically, the federal housing discrimination laws are, make, you know, are make it complicated. And so we have two sectors, which are agricultural and some educational workers, which there's our exemptions for. And so there's an effort to seek exemptions to that, to that discrimination statute for workforce housing related to medical workers, especially in rural communities. So there's a lot of work on that. And for me, kind of the new note on this list was the zoning by right for medical facilities. And I think that's something we can discuss at some point. I mean, I would definitely say that we, as a, as a board and probably at the Planning Commission or somewhere in there, where as a, if that's, if that's something that's, that's a very discreet item that I think that as a local community, we can really hone in on, if there's language that is helpful in that. Those are my three observations. I'm looking forward to the event. If you can't get in the room, definitely get online to see it and participate. And this is good, because you're right, there's, a lot of this is just myth busting as well. So I really appreciate that, a part of your effort, because there's, so much of our time is spent often in discussions, sort of myth busting on various things. And it's great when there already, that's already happened and we can talk about other things with our constituents. So appreciate, thanks for the effort.
I want to add one more thing. Just, you reminded me that an additional thing that I didn't highlight, that I will add to my slides, was the desire for us to, us and other large employers to find a way, if possible, to coordinate around sharing job opportunities with spouses and partners who are coming. So I'm going to write HR down, but I know what that will mean. And that is challenging again because of the fairness issue. It's not like we can kind of fast-track people into jobs over others, but at least make that, you know, make sure that people are aware of where some of those key job postings are. And a little bit more assistance with that was something that came up time and time again, because one of the common misnomers was like that the, something that I didn't find to be as true was the idea that like, there's all these male doctors with trailing wives who are bored. That maybe was a narrative in the past, or maybe was true in the past. But that, you know, increasingly, these are households where if there's a partner, their partner is working. Many are paired up medical professionals. And, and that issue of like there being activities or shopping for the spouses just really wasn't as prevalent. Well, but I continue to hear that in the community, so I wanted to kind of point that out, that that HR thing was a big piece.
Thank you. So we are going to go to public comment on Zoom, and then we will come back to the board for more discussion. And so Kayla, can we do that?
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718. I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning again, Kentawaskey from Mexico. I agree with Rex Fong, one of our biggest things is our housing problem here. We don't have it, the RIN numbers. As people look at those, unless they're different than the rest of counties in Bulek, there's a higher percentage in the upper two categories here than there is in the lower two. And for people to come here, I'll be quite direct with you, you know, I was involved with Ramon with the Open Door, was battling this thing to get more caregivers here. And it's a very uphill battle. Part of the reason is, is because it's not a good place or a fun place, let's put it that way, for a medical professional. The hiatus scores, the high level of addiction, the high level of everything that goes with that, is very negative when it comes to healthcare. Facilities aren't good. I might be, might be misunderstanding, but I think a lot of the reasons we don't have doctors and the wives here who are also medical professionals, is we don't offer the point of the amenities that they would like, the arts, those kinds of things. We don't have the major downtown, big city life. A lot of them have come to cherish. You get a few of them who appreciate what we have, who like to go fishing and nature, walking trails and enjoy hunting, but it's mammal. And the future for our Humboldt County healthcare, until we get our drug addiction, our sex trafficking, all of these other things that we keep talking about, never control, which is not a fun, fun place for them to be here. And I hear that all the time when I'm flying on planes, somebody who just came up here and served as a locum or a temporary nurse person, they're out of here, and there's a lot of negativity. So anyway, best of luck with this. I hope the drives keep getting made, it sounds like a PR. And it's a very important thing, all of us here are medical care. Thank you for coming on to this.
Thank you, Chair. That is all.
Okay, we'll go to public comment in the room. Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. I'm Gordon Clowworthy, and today I'm speaking as a member of Access Humboldt and also on the programming committee there. Wonderful presentation. It will be broadcast through Access Humboldt, so anybody watching today on this station will be able to see it. I don't know if there's going to be call-ins and not, but it will be broadcast for everybody. So if you don't have a ticket, if you can't see it in person, you will be able to see it online. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ellen Taylor, and I wasn't expecting to speak, and I'm so glad that I was here for this presentation. It's wonderful. And this thing on the January 28th, I'm sure will be very, very illuminating as well. I practiced at Open Door for 31 years. I only retired four years ago. I've also worked at Redwoods Rural and Southern Humboldt earlier. And so I have a lot of, a lot of overview of the whole medical scene here. Now I'm, now I'm a patient in the community, and I've gotten some experience, broken my leg, had a son-in-law with terminal kidney disease, things like that. So I've seen various, various perspectives from the patient point of view. I will endorse what your caller on Zoom said, which was that there is really a preponderance for the lower, the practitioners who practice with the less affluent parts of the community might experience boredom because of the repetition of depression, hypertension, alcoholism, mental health issues. And the holistic element of practicing medicine has pretty much disappeared, perhaps not in Southern Humboldt. They cling to it a little bit more. But I suppose all the incoming residents and other people who are here to, to try it out here or to pay off their medical bill, their bill for medical school are more enduring of all the computer work and records-keeping, which absorbs such a huge amount of time and really turned off a lot of the older practitioners. I noticed that Bill Hunter's name wasn't up there. He's someone who has even longer experience than I do as a physician, and he'd be a good person to talk to about all this. And again, if you, if you ever would like to talk to me about it, I'd be delighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Ariel Neal, and I really liked your presentation about the medical stuff going on in Humboldt County. I have had some chronic medical issues that I've had to like deal with in the last three years, experienced our residency program, and it was extremely helpful to me. One of the things you brought up, that you, Natalie, brought up, was the zoning laws and building codes. And I see these being prohibitive in multiple aspects of our community's development. Sometimes they're not clear, sometimes they're arbitrary, sometimes enforcement is arbitrary. And this leads to a lot of miscommunications. So basically, I think it would be really important for us to look into our zoning and our building laws, because that's part of why we can't get new housing built, that's part of why we can't retain the doctors. And that's just like my two cents.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in the room have public comment on this item? No? Okay, so I'm going to close public comment, and we'll come back to the board. I'm going to refer back to Supervisor Royal.
Thank you. To speak to a couple of the items, I will reach out. I would, I would love to talk with you and Bill Hunter. I did sort of wind down on inviting new people to, to talk with me, but I would happily do that, and hopefully before the 27th, so try to get cracking on that. There will be an opportunity for audience engagement, for people watching the live stream, as well as people in the audience. And it will be through your phone. And I've done this in the past, and it's been, even for people who are not particularly tech savvy, I think it's been fairly easy once people are walked through it. So that will exist, but it won't be a town hall format where the mic will be passed around, and there'll be the opportunity to ask questions in that way. And the questions will be asked by the moderator of the panel. So that's a few more things about what to expect. And I will just say, there's so much more, there's so much more than just provider recruitment and retention to talk about. This was just an entree for me into some of the bigger issues and, you know, wanting to build those relationships with folks. There's been a lot of change in who the CEOs of all these institutions are. So hopefully, this will provide an opportunity to hear from them and see them and know who they are in the community as well. So anyway, I hope folks will be able to join in. Again, that's Monday, January 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? And I would entertain a motion as well. Supervisor Madron, did you have a comment? No.
I'll move to receive and file the report.
Okay. Kayla, can we get a vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. I just want to also just say, I know this was a lot of time and effort for you, Supervisor Royal, and a lot of months of coordinating people and putting together this presentation, and, you know, still ongoing for the presentation on the 27th. So as, for myself and I think my board, we appreciate it so much. And this is a topic, like I said earlier, that all of us hear about frequently from our constituents. So thank you. So at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We will return at 10:30, we'll return at 10:40 for the last item of the meeting today. Okay? Thank you. Not allowing us, but, you know, we have to take breaks throughout the day, so I know sometimes that's disruptive to the community that's sitting here, but necessary for our board. So our next item is coming to us from Supervisor Madron, and I'm going to pass the, pass that to him in just a second. I do want to however, say to the community at large that we have received lots of emails and lots of public comment that has been forwarded to us by the clerk of the boards. And so recognizing that this board has received that and read, I'm assuming read those, I have. And so with that being said, I'm going to pass this item to Supervisor Madron to open.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. So after listening to public comment and input over the last number of months and spending significant time reviewing the draft EIR, I have put forward this letter for consideration by our board that offers some comments that are contained in the letter that's on the agenda, basically to improve the environmental considerations for this large-scale, potentially impactful project. So really with that, I look forward to hearing from the rest of the board and from the public here today.
Okay, so I am going to pass it to our board for small comments right now, and then open it to the public for a public comment. And then we are going to come back to our board for more directed questions, thoughts or updates to this letter before it either gets passed or does not pass. So I'm going to start with Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and I want to thank Supervisor Madron for bringing this letter forward. I will be voting yes on this if anybody wants to know. There are a couple of things. A lot of these are more questions than comments, and some of the, if I was, like some people, I would wordsmith this to heck for some of the wording in it, but I think we'll deal with it. I think Gary Harris and has helped Steve put a great letter together. But with, with this being done, I would like to hope that some of our board has reached out to our Tuolumne supervisors and our Lassen County supervisors, because this is a pretty big economic development part of their counties and depressed counties. Tuolumne County is sitting on an excess, according to the Farm Marshal, 50,000 piles of product that they need to get rid of, which the, you know, they burn, just openly burn, which I'm sure affects. Some of the other things, you know, we have had GSNR up here twice in the last three months, answering all the questions we could throw at it and everything else. And us being a part of GSFA Humboldt County, you guys at any time can call GSFA or call the RCRC and get answers to your questions. But if we send this letter forward, as is, I'm not going to wordsmith it, I'm not going to do anything else, it's probably part of 12,000 comments that we'll get. I think we're up over 9,000 now. So I look, I look forward to the conversation today, but I will be voting yes on it. So I look, I look forward to the conversation today, but I will be voting yes on it. I just hope we reach out to the, to our other counties and say, hey, we're, we're going to come in and try to whack the heck out of this and, you know, or get some more questions. And, and hopefully, I mean, in all honesty, try to stop it. But these economic things, I would hope that they wouldn't turn around and start asking these questions about our, our fish operations, which I fully support, and our offshore wind that I fully disport, support, which have so many questions. So I, I, I think it's a little bit about openness and talking to our fellow supervisors as we move forward with things and how the decisions we make here affect them. This is, I don't want to say it's unprecedented, but I don't think, except for the appendix error, I don't think Humboldt's even mentioned in the EIR. So 1,300 pages. So I look forward to the discussion. I know there'll be a lot of, let's send the letter. And I just wanted to know, if you're trying to convince me, I, I agree. Let's send the letter.
Um, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
I was going to wait till after public comment.
That's fine. Supervisor, Supervisor Royal?
I'll also wait till public comment.
Okay, so I also am looking forward to hearing public comment and have some thoughts that I'll bring back after public comment about the letter as well. I want to thank Supervisor Madron for bringing this forward. And I know that he did go through that EIR, and it's very lengthy. So applause to him, because I did not go through the whole thing. It's a lot. And so with that, we're going to open it to public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 2731, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes. Caller 2731. Due to volume, I'm moving to the next caller. Caller 5185, I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
So I'm going to say this.
Yeah, hi, thank you very much. Thank you very much for allowing public comments at this meeting. And thank you so much Humboldt County Board of Supervisors for sending, or considering sending such an articulate letter of response. My name is Maya Kozla. I live in Sonoma County. I've been working on this issue for a long time. Enough to note that there, the, the stated in potential impacts associated with this project, as stated in your very articulate letter, are excellent and not to be ignored. And you have not ignored them, especially, you know, the sustainability, the risks to public health, deplete, potentially depleted forest resources and GHD impacts. So I, I really hope very much that you will move to send the letter. It's really clear that there are unacceptable impacts to commu, to the community that would result, and to the environment, that would result from such a project. In particular, there's some, there's a lot of concern about GSNR's partnership with Drax, a UK-based company that currently uses coal-fired plants for burning wood pellets and has a track record of well over, well over 11,000 violations, which essentially amounts to about five violations per day since 2020. A partnership like this probably needs to be reconsidered. And, you know, there are so many other impacts. The Stockton community is also very concerned. So I am, I'm wholeheartedly support this letter, and I hope that you will send it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder to turn off any other distractions nearby, because it can cause a delay. Caller 2731, I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have three minutes. Okay, on to the next. Caller 3636, I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have three minutes. Caller 3636. Okay, on to the next. Caller 5339, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Does it look like they're unmuting?
Hi, this is Fableton, North Coast Environmental Center. I'm calling to strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to send the letter commenting on the DEIR for the Golden State Natural Resources Forest Resiliency Demonstration Project. NUC would also like to encourage the Board to consider two revisions to the letter. The first being to remove the suggestion to use forest thinning for biomass energy in California. And the second to add recommendations that the EIR clearly state the distances to the nearest sensitive communities, and list every county where health costs exceed $1 million a year. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope that you decide to send the letter.
Thank you. Caller 6127, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
This is Dan Chandler. I would like to thank the Board very much for continuing to put this issue under scrutiny, and in particular for drafting a strong letter. The DEIR is appropriate in some places, but woefully weak in others. And I hope that you will end the letter, and we'll get a better final ER than what we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, Ken Silaskey, I think we're having a problem with not all these people unmute ourselves. Anyway, I got two this time. Thank you. Strongly support the letter, as everybody does, and I believe you have a tremendous support on that. I do wish to make a statement. I support very strongly the, the use of these things to be used, biomass to be used, rather than be burned out where there is no control over it, toxic, go up in the air no matter what. Process, in my opinion, is wonderful. With the same, I don't support cutting down trees, logging things just to make them the pellet. But as long as it's part of the leftover waste, rather than having a disposal in other matters such as burning, I don't think it makes it much easier to be, to get out of the water.
Thank you. Caller 3636, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. It's star six to unmute. Caller 2731, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes. You can press star six, and that will also help you unmute yourself.
Hi, just, just to check, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Jennifer Normoyle. I'm calling in from the Bay Area. And I'm calling in because this is an issue that impacts all Californians. And it, and the GSNR proposal as it stands, I, I don't see how there's going to be an overwhelming benefit to, to the state, to its, some of its communities in particular. And as it stands, there is no benefit whatsoever to the planet. It, one of the, the, one of the items in your letter, which was very well-written, and I want to say, yes, please send this letter, has to do with the excess of greenhouse gas emissions. And in this day and age, we, we can't allow that. Our state is on fire now because of climate change. And climate change is a thing, no matter, you know, how many people still choose to deny it. So we really have to rethink whether this proposal is going to bene, benefit us or our children. I am a retired physician, and another issue that is of great concern to me is the health impacts to communities adjacent to the factories, to commu, to the communities adjacent to the wood storage facility proposed in Stockton. This is going to increase the risk of respiratory diseases and cancer. And the 24/7 noise pollution from the factories will impact people's mental health and well-being and overall quality of life. So please, Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, please agree to send this letter. It is a well-written letter, and it really reaches a lot of the most important points that are, that are flaws in the DEIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 0920, I will unmute you, or you can press star six if it's not working, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Martha Walden. I'm a member of 350 Humboldt. It sounds like the letter will probably be sent, and I'm glad about that. And I'm hoping for a better, more effective project in terms of forest restoration. So there's just one point that I, I really want to make, and I know I've made it before. And that is how incredibly important for the climate it would be to utilize the biomass in a different way. It's almost ironic to remove all that wood from the forest in the name of preventing wildfire and then go ahead and burn it. So that actually emits more carbon than wildfires. And I know we get electricity out of burning the stuff. But that electricity is the most carbon-intensive electricity ever made. So we can only displace electricity from cleaner sources. California has a reputation for being in the forefront of the fight to ward off climate catastrophe. But the state and other governments have ordained burning biomass as carbon neutral. And climate scientists and activists all over the world are just frantically trying to change that designation. So considering how much biomass we generate, stressing climate-friendly ways of dealing with it is really crucial. So I just think it would be so important if this project in particular could choose a different technology, help move the needle away from incineration and towards products that sequester carbon instead of speeding it right to the atmosphere. And also hydrogen for aviation fuel makes sense, too. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Caller 3636, I'm going to unmute you, or you can press star six if it's not working. Caller 3636. This is my last attempt. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yes, you can hear me? Okay, having trouble with the muting system there. My, my name is Paul Hughes. I'm commenting on Agenda Item J2. I'm the Executive Director of Forests Forever, a statewide citizens advocacy group since 1989 for wise management and conservation of California's forests. I strongly support the draft letter from the Humboldt Board of Supervisors to Patrick Blalock, Blacklock, President and CEO of the RCRC, which calls for addressing the glaring inadequacies of the DEIR issued October 22nd for the controversial Forest Resiliency Demonstration Project. It's no wonder the GSNR biomass electricity project is so controversial. Its potential forest harm, climate pollution, health burdens on affected communities, and the underwater economics of the proposal all would take us in the wrong direction. GSNR maintains that the project will help the California economy, when in fact, this industry has required enormous and ongoing government subsidies from the European Union just to keep it solvent. In a glaring accounting error that's still in, in the process of being cleaned up, some countries are massively subsidizing this climate-damaging industry. When this financial crutch is eventually removed, the subsidies, it could strand an industry here in California, placing pressure on California politicians and taxpayers to keep it alive with both dollars and forest resources. This dirty biomass industry has already made itself an unwelcome neighbor throughout the US South, where for years it has harmed the health and quality of life of local residents. Drax, the UK-based major partner of GSNR, has racked up 189 violations of environmental law in Canada. Communities in the Port of Stockton already bear among the highest pollution burdens in California. They would be subjected to additional noise and pollution from transport of pellets in addition to the risks of fire and explosion at the storage sites. This wasteful and forest-destructive industry currently does not exist at an industrial scale in California. GSNR's proposed project would change that, allowing it to get a foothold here. We must not allow that to happen. I urge you to authorize the Chair to sign the letter and to direct the clerk of the board to send the letter to Golden State Natural Resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, that is all.
I wanted to make sure, did you go back and the, the numbers that we, that didn't acknowledge? Can you, are they still on?
Yes. Caller 2731 and 3636 both got to speak.
Okay, thank you for that. So at this time, we're going to open it up to public comment in the room. You can come forward or get in line, however you prefer, but please do come forward. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. I will just say ditto to basically everything that has been said via Zoom. My name is Tom Wheeler. I'm the Executive Director of Epic. Thank you Supervisor Madron for drafting this letter. The letter reflects the concerns frankly, of more than 100 environmental groups, over 22,000 citizens who have participated in the public review of this DEIR. As you've heard, we've had folks call in from across the state because folks are concerned about this project. And I think that Supervisor Madron's letter does a really good job of outlining some of the highest top-level concerns. I urge you to send the letter, and thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, please. Hi again.
Hi again, Ellen Taylor.
You can pull that microphone down so you don't have to, there you go.
Thank you. In regard to Supervisor Bone's comment about economic importance of this to Tuolumne and Lassen Counties, I, I want to emphasize that there are lots of projects which could make money, but which are damaging, and this is one of those. I sent a letter to, or last night, an email to everybody praising the letter. I think it's very diplomatic and very straightforward and gentle. And for that reason, it's a good letter, and it, and it also touches on all the points. My edits were very much more specific and related to a different outcome. But of course, this is only a draft that we're commenting on right now. And in the case of a draft, perhaps the diplomatic approach is more appropriate. There's two things which weren't mentioned in the document, which, which ought to be covered, which is a proper, comprehensive consultation with Indigenous which is a proper, comprehensive consultation with indigenous communities that live in the counties out there, not just an archeologic checkoff. And also, the issue, which always needs to be brought up, of what they leave after, hypothetically, after raking the forest, whether there's any attention to the kind of forest which is left behind, and indigenous values play into that, too. If they're going to cut down all the hardwoods, that's not going to be good for the environment, for the habitat, and the bioregion. But again, I'm so glad that you wrote this letter, and I'm so glad that, I can hope that you'll all approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Iara, and I'll probably be really brief because I think you've, well, it's really great to hear that it sounds like there is support for this letter, and I really thank Steve Madrone for writing it. I kind of focused on the DIAR and their belief on the vegetation treatment as a primary approach to wildfire management. And so, I kind of did research on studies, both the studies they had in the DIEIR and also other ones. And one that impressed me, which is called "Modifying Wildfire Behavior: The Effectiveness of Fuel Treatments, the Status of Our Knowledge," was based on the review of 250 papers that evaluated the types of fuel treatment in relation to the behavior of western forests. So, prescribed fire, mechanical thinning, and a combination of thinning and burning. And they essentially concluded, quote, "Although the assertion is frequently made that simply reducing tree density can reduce wildfire hazard, the scientific literature provides tenuous support for this hypothesis. The specifics of how treatments are carried out and the relative effectiveness of alternative prescriptions in changing wildfire behavior are not supported by significant consensus of scientific research at this point in time." They go on to say, "Scientists recognize that large-scale prescribed burning and mechanical thinning are still experimental and may yet reveal unanticipated effects on biodiversity, wildlife populations, and ecosystems function." So, for me to base a multi-million-dollar project on research and knowledge that is in question assuredly is a mistake, which, so, again, I want to thank the Board and for considering the letter, and it sounds like sending it. And I guess I would support, I haven't heard it yet, but arguments that maybe that you support Alternative 1, which is no project at all. I agree that, that's, thank you.
You have 30 seconds, ma'am, if you want to finish.
Oh, I do. Well, I just think it is a good idea to maybe contact the counties, Tuolumne and Lassen, and, you know, just kind of, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. Come forward.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Kearns, and I'm the Conservation Chair for the California Native Plant Society, and I'm also on the State Conservation Board for the California Native Plant Society. I'm really, I want to thank Supervisor Madrone for bringing this to the Board, and I want to thank the Board for being so proactive in taking this on. A friend of mine asked me, well, why are you bothering with something that's not even here? And I think you guys are acknowledging that really clearly, that it may not be here yet, but it certainly does affect us, and will be here next. As far as being a forest resiliency project, I'm going to go ahead and go back to the dictionary and read a definition of resilience. "The ability to recover quickly from illness, change, or misfortune; the property of a material that enables it to resume its original shape or position after being bent, stretched, or compressed; and the act of springing back or rebounding." If you're looking at forest resiliency, to take a tree that takes 40, 50, 80, 200 years to grow that is burned in pellets in a matter of minutes, that's not the act of rebounding quickly from anything. And I think that's something that we need to take seriously, is using the word "resiliency." Forest resiliency is kind of like painting it really nicely. I think it's, the term is greenwashing. And it makes it sound very nice, but there's no actual resiliency achieved by this project. So, I want to thank the Board for taking the time to comment on the DEIR on this project. And I'm a little concerned about the implication, Supervisor Bone, that if we get involved in Tuolumne's project, that somehow they'll come and put their nose in our business. That's what it seemed like you were saying. And also, as far as all of the piles that are in Tuolumne County, that's a very real fact, and it's a big problem we have to address, but it won't be addressed by DRACs coming in here. I'm just leery of the implication that this project and others like it increased resiliency at all. Large-scale removal of forests will not prevent forest fires. They will not decrease the intensity of the fires, and they will not increase rural protection from the fires. We have to do something else about that. That's it. Thank you so much for listening.
Hi, thank you. Hi, come forward. Welcome again.
Hey, everybody. Gordon Clowery, concerned citizen this time. I love this letter. I think it's a great way of acting locally but thinking globally, and it's something that we need to do more often. Pellets with the subsidies have made it more profitable for these companies to come in and cut down trees, and instead of using them for, say, building materials, they get more money with these pellets, and that has driven up the cost of building materials over the past few years. And you know how I care about housing. That's a big thing for me, too. I like what you're doing. I think we need to stop this before it gets out of hand, and I appreciate what the Board's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Chair Bushnell, hello, Supervisors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this critical issue. My name is Gary Hughes, and I work as a co-director and the Americas Program Coordinator for the international organization Biofuel Watch. I'm here to express support for the letter, and I wanted to make the effort to be here in person today because it is really significant. Thank you so much. Our organization works to strengthen community engagement on industrial bioenergy products, projects, and to address the environmental and human rights harms arising from the accelerating trends of converting dirty fossil fuel energy infrastructure to function as dirty bioenergy infrastructure. Within the handrails of this mission and in celebration of our efforts to work simultaneously at both a local and an international level, our organization was immediately alarmed when some two and a half years ago, we identified the Golden State Natural Resources Wood Pellet Export Scheme as an emerging threat to California forests and communities. Since the summer of 2022, we have worked persistently to raise public awareness of this project, as well as ensure that decision-makers like yourselves are factually aware of the scope and scale of this massive wood pellet export proposal. Thus, we are very appreciative and in strong support of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors pursuing the proposed action of sending the comment letter regarding the deficient draft environmental impact report for the Golden State Natural Resources project. And this is a very significant action, and we commend the Board of Supervisors for doing this. And again, I wanted to be here today to express my appreciation. Quickly, a little bit of context. For those of us who remember when there were pulp mills on the bay here, those two pulp mills, when operating at full capacity, would produce 500,000 tons of pulp a year. Now, it's apples and oranges a little bit, but understand the scale of Golden State Natural Resources is to produce 1 million tons of wood pellets a year. These are huge plants that are being proposed. This is a huge project. So, hopefully, you know, this letter demonstrates that you're paying close attention to this project and that you will continue to follow up. The governance has been irregular. The situation in Stockton has been really egregious. The discriminatory governance in Stockton is raising alarms around the state. And then, in closing, just to recognize that your previous letter, you asked for more public meetings to be rescheduled. Those meetings were never rescheduled. The California Air Resources Board also asked for more meetings to be rescheduled. They were never rescheduled. So, I hope you stay firm and continue to follow up closely on this project because the governance necessitates your close attention. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is the last chance? No? Okay, so, we're going to close public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to the Board. As this is Supervisor Madrone's item, I'm going to start with him.
Nothing additional in terms of comments at this time. I think I've made those clear in the letter, and this is the draft DEIR, so I think it's the appropriate step to take at this time, is to submit comments in regards to how we think that there are additional information that needs to be responded to. Once the final DEIR comes out, I assume our Board will also take a close look at that and decide what we want to do at that time. But I look forward to hearing from the rest of the Board.
Thank you. Anybody have thoughts? Supervisor Wilson.
Sure. Thanks for this, and I want to echo the basic sentiment, sentiment, excuse me, from Supervisor Bone about, in terms of this letter, sure, I would probably have some, I could probably nitpick a bit on this as well, but in the interests of moving things forward, what I agree with are the basic four recommendations at the end of the letter, which summarize pretty well. And these processes, I want to emphasize that the DEIR process is a disclosure process, essentially, is really what it is. And so, it's all about the questions, as was mentioned. So, the strengthening of the environmental analysis to accurately account for forest feedstock sustainability and greenhouse gas lifecycle impacts, improve mitigation measures to ensure enforceable air quality controls, the localized, and localized health monitoring for Stockton residents. And I visited that community some years ago when I was a Harbor District Commissioner to touring harbors, and I was pretty, it definitely was something that I bring up often when we talk about our own harbor development and how adjacent communities need to be accounted for, and what I did not see when I was in Stockton, it was, it was, there's a lot of improvement that needs to be done there. Expanding alternatives, I'm always supportive of expanding alternatives and expanding that review, and certainly in terms of scale, and especially if this is a demonstration project in general, then maybe that's something that we really should be considering. And then, again, incorporating environmental justice principles and prioritizing the needs of the overburdened communities like Stockton, I think is just something that needs to be part of that. So, I agree with all of the recommendations, or the conclusionary recommendations with this, and I am not going to get into what I think are probably, again, this is a reference to the draft document, so there's a whole nother round of comments that can come at a different time. So, I think this is helpful in moving those questions forward, and so, I'm happy to make the motion when the time comes.
Supervisor Arroyo, first of all, we have a motion, so is there a second before we move?
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion?
No, I said I'm happy to make one.
Oh. Well, I thought, expressed interest in making a motion.
Someone else wants to.
Okay. Well, we'll go with Supervisor Arroyo's thoughts first.
Okay, thank you. I do just have a couple of additional comments, and I also, you know, we received an abundance of public comment. A lot of it came in this morning, so it was difficult to get through while we were actively in a meeting. So, next time when we're, you know, commenting on the final DEIR, I do encourage folks to get it in before the meeting is taking place. That said, you know, there were a couple of comments from members of the public that were, I think, I agree that the letter is great as is, and there were a couple of comments that I, that made me dig into the document a little bit further. And one of those was that there isn't mention of prescribed fire in this document, and so the initial letter speaks to an emphasis on thinning and prescribed burns as key methods, but since they're not proposing in here to utilize prescribed fire, I do think it's a good observation to consider taking that out. And I also concur about the consultation with the local tribes, and think that that could be incorporated into Recommendation 4, addressing community impacts. I do think that is part of incorporating environmental justice principles, but it could be specifically noted there if we wanted to make that minor change. I will also say there's, you know, more than 25 counties impacted by this, so not just the places where the pellet production would occur, but all of the feedstock locations that are identified in the document. So, it is very robust, and I've spoken with some of the people that I know in the San Joaquin County, where the Port of Stockton is located, and other counties that are impacted by this project. So, I appreciate Supervisor Bone's suggestion, but it is a, quite a big lift to speak to everyone who would be directly impacted because of those feedstock locations being located throughout, you know, 24 or more counties in California, I believe, and three in Oregon, so it's quite a lift. I am still a little unclear on the implication of, and I can wait until the final DEIR, but I am still a little unclear about the implication of the master agreement for all of Region 5, which is basically California, the Forest Service Master Agreement, because that, it's pretty clear where the feedstock locations are, and they're outside of our community, although we're all impacted by this project in the region and on this planet, I should say. But I am still curious about how that master agreement factors in, and I don't see it really very clearly spelled out in the DEIR. I would assume, having seen many environmental documents in the past, that the final identified feedstock areas and areas of impact would be those that are, that carry through the life of the project, and that despite there being a master agreement that goes further than that, that those areas are the extent of the physical, on-the-ground work. It's pretty tough to determine the environmental impact of something that has so many locations and the cumulative impact, but I see that there is significant effort being made. This is a really robust document, but I agree with many of the commenters that there needs to be more. So, those are my comments for now. I would suggest that we remove and prescribed burns from the first sentence of the, of Item 1 under Environmental Impact Concerns, and I would suggest adding consultation with the local tribes and item, the last item for under Recommendations, but I can live with it either way. So, Mike, do you want to make the motion? Do you care if I make it? Okay, I'll move that we approve the letter with those two changes. So, again, that would be removing and prescribed burns from Environmental Impact Concerns, Item 1, and adding and consult with tribes to Recommendation 4.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, we're going to go to Supervisor Bone for his comments.
Yeah, and I, again, I second that because I appreciate the letter. I wasn't going to wordsmith it. There are a couple of things. The Mywok tribe in Tuolumne, our last two meetings in Tuolumne were on their reservation, were on their lands, and their chairman at the time, and this isn't, but he had voiced support for this project, both for the economics and what it will bring. I guess, so, I think those are important. There's plenty of studies that will tell you that working on the forest and cleaning out the, you know, kind of working with the slash from the logging and things like that would take out a lot of the fire concerns, I guess. Experts are experts, but I think as this moves forward, I guess it should be known, I'm not, no longer on the GSNR Board. My term ran out the 1st of January, and I've now been appointed to the Western Interstate Regions Board through NACO or through RCRC, WIR's subsidiary of NACO, the Western Interstate Regions of 15 states. So, I don't know if it's a demotion or a promotion, but I appreciate the work. We, as far as the title, working with the Forest Service, we started this about eight years ago, 90. ago, nine years ago, talking with them because they have a serious problem, and you take a look at the amount of fires we've had and the level of work we haven't done in our forests, and I'm hearing that if we don't do anything, alternative sources, I know the USAL Forest was making biochar, but we're talking more biochar than anything. We're talking cellulose, airplane fuel. There's a lot of things being talked about, but these are forestry issues that need to be addressed. So I appreciate the letter, those questions, and comments will be addressed, and I appreciate the robust conversation we had today, and I do appreciate Supervisor Madron bringing this forward so people could have that, say, throughout the county, and we're actually getting things from, comments from Australia and everything else, and I think, I read the comments coming in this morning, and they were all eerily the same, so I imagine they came from the same draft letter, and I appreciate the outreach, whichever group did that outreach, so I think that's important, too. So I want to appreciate that. So, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to, I think we have a motion and a second, and just wanted to convey my thoughts. I also don't agree with everything in the letter, but agree with the, looking for my, the recommendations, which I think address lots of issues in a wholeheartedly way to say that these are, one through four, are really what most folks are all concerned about, and I also want to agree with Supervisor Bone that, you know, our Board or even the community to reach out to the counties that it does affect, although it wholly affects California in general, and so I want to agree with that with the community. And appreciate the thoughts coming forward from Supervisor Madron, and appreciate the changes from Supervisor Arroyo. So with that, I think we'll call for the vote.
Supervisor Arroyo? Oh, yes. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So, thank you. That is going to conclude our meeting today, but before we do, so I would like to say that, you know, I hope that, and I know that everybody is aware of the catastrophes that are happening in LA counties, and so our thoughts and prayers are with those people down there, and our, some of our local fire departments have, went to LA County to assist, and so I hope our community as a whole is just really praying for them in whatever way or form you that you do, and every day is just really such a huge catastrophe, and I think Supervisor Bone wants to say something.
That's what you said.
Okay. So we're adjourned, and we do not have a meeting next week, Tuesday, so we will be back on schedule the following week, and thanks so much.